I will call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, March 7th. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you, Mr. Wanniger. I feel much more official now. Comments must be directed to the commission, not to the audience. While the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chair Merk.
Here.
Vice Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Commissioners Jagiello.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Powers.
Mr. Jagiello, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no consent items tonight. We don't have any public hearing items, but I believe this is, we're in public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? All right. This is your big chance, Kathy. Come on. All right. The discussion item tonight is the residential solar access guidelines. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a continuation of a hearing or discussion that you had at your last meeting. For several years now, the city has employed regulations intended to protect solar access to residences within the city of Ojai. That regulation was adopted by the city council in 2014. At that time, the council directed staff to adapt the city of Santa Barbara guidelines that the Planning Commission had received some background on prior to the adoption of the ordinance. And so for the past three and a half years, almost four years, we've used those guidelines. At the time, the guidelines that were being employed merely took Santa Barbara out of the text and replaced it, for the most part, with Ojai. There were some changes in references to the Ojai ordinance, but as you discovered last week or at your last meeting, there still were a lot of references that made no sense in their application of Ojai because they really were pertinent only to Santa Barbara. So as a result of that, we went back and frankly stripped out a lot of information that was in the, the information was previously provided to you. And as a result, we're providing you with an updated packet this evening. I'll start by saying that Attachment B, this is, this document here, we will acknowledge that that is almost impossible to read in its copied form. There's a slightly better version that we use at the counter, and when the planners explain it to the, to our customers, it generally makes sense. And again, this was something that was taken from Santa Barbara. But other than that, we've tried to update all the rest of the information here. This evening, we've actually provided you with another updated version. I'd like to extend my appreciation to Commissioner Quilisi, who went through the document in detail and caught some other details that we think should be changed in the handout. So that appears in red text in your packet this evening, and we do recommend that you add those changes, make those changes. One I will point out in particular is on Attachment A, page four of 12, and it's on number six, and talks about the, makes reference to figure five, which establishes an angle, and talks about a 30 percent, the Santa Barbara ordinance apparently made reference to a 30 percent angle. I want to read specifically the section of the Ojai code that will have to be reflected here because that whole section will have to be rewritten. If you'll bear with me. So it's referring to height limitation. The maximum elevation of each point on a structure in a residential zone is measured from the base elevation. And we did change the reference from average grade, I think was the previous term, to the Ojai term of base elevation. Shall not exceed the sum of, and we'll make copies of this, you don't need to follow along that.
On page five, it's, it's, this is the actual code on page five.
Oh, yes. You're right.
Of the attachment.
Very good.
So it's there, and B.
Right, B. Thank you, Sherry. So that, that information in paragraph B there will have to be molded into section six. So that, that whole diagram and section will have to be changed to reflect the actual Ojai specific determination of height limitation. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we do recommend approval of the revised guidelines. Again, we appreciate the commission's review of these, and we now think that these are fully reflective of the Ojai ordinance and the Ojai conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? I'm still confused about this 58 percent thing. I understand 30 degrees. Like you can draw a 30 degree angle. And then what it says in the ordinance here is 58 percent of the shortest distance to the nearest northerly lot line, which to me doesn't necessarily mean a 30 degree angle, does it?
No, 30 degree, ignore the 30 degrees. That's the, that's the Santa Barbara reference.
Well, I thought that was the whole idea of a solar ordinance, is you've got your latitude, basically around here it's 34 degrees, would determine where the shadow line would fall.
Well, again, this is establishing the height limitation, and apparently we don't use an angle at all in this, in this instance.
Yep. The code's right there in page five.
Yeah, but somebody just wrote that out.
The Santa Barbara ordinance, they don't have a height restriction. That's, I think, why they've determined this, but we do have a height restriction.
That's correct.
So we don't need that.
Pardon?
Why do we need that if we already have a height restriction?
Because the height restriction can be modified. It can be more restrictive in order to protect the solar access to the adjacent lot.
Right. 10-2405B says either this complicated calculation of allowable height or the more restrictive height limitation imposed in 10-2404. So whichever one of those is more restrictive is the one that applies. And this one is, I'll grant you, it's hard to understand.
But we have a height restriction, and, okay, so it can be a certain height if it's one story or two stories or whatever it is. And then you do your diagram. It's in compliance if you're not overshadowing your neighbor, and it's not in compliance if you are. So I'm not quite sure what the point of this is.
Again, as I understand it, the, the height, well, I have to go back to the ordinance, but the height limitation is established by the zone itself, and depending on the distance from, of a structure from the northern property line, that height may have to be more restrictive per this section of the code to continue to afford that neighboring, the adjacent neighboring northerly property, the proper solar access to which it's entitled.
Right. This is for new construction.
Right.
So obviously, if you draw your diagram and you're overshadowing your neighbor, it doesn't really matter what height you are, it's still not in compliance. Isn't that true?
Well, the, the.
Not, I don't think so.
Figure number five, it makes total sense to me, right, the way it's written.
A 30 degree angle is easy to visualize.
Well, it's also easy to calculate, too. So, you know, you just measure the highest point, and you just can't go up higher than that 30 degree level. I mean, it's just, that's your, that's your bearing.
Yeah.
But we have height restrictions.
Well, we, well, we do and we don't. Well, you could, what's, this is most likely going to happen for remodel projects, if somebody wanted to put a second story on.
Right.
So the second story's up, what, what is it?
25 feet.
26, 25 feet?
We have more than one height restriction in the code.
Right. So whatever the height restriction is, it has to calculate to that 30 degrees. So you're, because you're building a new building, you come over to the property line, you go up 30 degrees, and if it, if it overshadows your neighbor, you can't do it.
Yeah, which sets different height restrictions for different parts of the building.
Yeah.
The more southerly parts of the building can be taller because they're under that 30 degree angle.
Exactly, exactly.
Whereas 10-2404 has a fixed number.
Exactly.
And so 10-2405B says whichever the fixed number or this thing, which I'm still not, it's not clear to me that 30 degrees and 58 percent, et cetera, et cetera, is the same thing.
Yeah, I can't even, I can't even get it.
Yeah, I don't think they are. But, but there are two, there are two independent restrictions on the height of a building. I'm not trying to defend it, I'm just saying, that's what the code says, and so whichever one is more restrictive is the one that applies. And at that point, the shadow diagrams are not of obvious usefulness.
But the 30 degrees applies to any height. That's the question, that's the point.
Yeah.
It applies to any height. So, so why have, why, why complicate? Be honest with you, I'm still, I've been struggling with this 58 percent. I can't figure it out, and I'm a pretty smart guy when it comes to building. I don't know where, where I would, what I would do with that, you know?
And, Mr. Chairman, maybe one option would be, since these are going to go to the council anyway for their consideration, you could, you could recommend that that provision be amended.
We have to make it very simple for the council, otherwise.
I, I think staff would appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think a drawing would really help here, and I'd be glad to put one together for you guys.
That'd be great.
Yeah. We'd appreciate that. I'll try and figure out what that means. I don't actually, but I think if I put it down on paper, maybe I can figure it out, so.
Right. All I'm saying is, it, it could be under this 30 degrees, and it could still impact the neighbor, in which case it's not in compliance.
No, it shouldn't be able to. That's the point. If it's under 30 degrees, it should not, it should not shadow overshadow.
Or 34 degrees, or whatever the latitude is here, yeah.
Well, that's, that's the whole point of it, yes.
I think 30 degrees is actually a little more conservative, isn't it?
Yeah.
If you're under 30 degrees, you're well within the.
Right.
34 raises it higher, right? 30 lowers it.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, and that is the solar ordinance, and that's how you project the sun, and if you do the math and the distance, you should not block your neighbor.
No matter how close they are to you.
Well, no, the closeness does matter, that's.
You start, you start from that point on the northern property line.
Yeah, but that's, that's already part of the formula. That's part of the formula. You have to, yes, you have to incorporate the distance.
Yeah, what, what I'm hearing is that the 58 percent is, is a conceptual, and the 30 degrees is a practical application, which is what people need.
Well, except the 30 degrees is not in the code anywhere.
Right.
So it's something we need to add.
The 58 percent business is in the code.
Yeah, I wish I could, somebody could explain.
Who put that together?
Yeah, yeah.
So the 58 came from Santa Barbara?
No, the 30 percent is Santa Barbara. The 58.
30 degrees is probably Santa Barbara.
30 degrees, thank you.
But we don't know where the 58 percent came from?
No, we don't.
Oh, wow. It was passed in June of 2014. I don't know that, well, he must have, there are some people on the council now that were there then.
We were here.
We could ask them, but.
Yeah, we need to make it, we need to make it work, and we need to make it simple and understandable for.
Yeah.
Applicants, staff, commission, city council, all of us.
My point, my point was that 10-2405B sets a fixed number for any given place, and that's the limit for any part of that building. And that evidently is what the council wanted four years ago.
But that's not.
And this 30 degree thing is very different.
But it's more in the spirit of the reality of the situation, because if your.
I would agree, it's easier to figure out, yeah.
Your building is back here, you can go up to 25 feet if you need to.
The farther, the farther you are away from that northern property line.
Why would you restrict the whole building if it's not in the 30 degree?
Right.
Right.
These are arbitrary. I mean, I'm sure it's based on.
Something.
Something, but it, it, its application would restrict the entire building.
It restricts the entire building, whereas the 30 degree does not.
Right.
So perhaps what we should be recommending to the council is that this 10-2405B and maybe the part of 10-2404 that sets a fixed limit on height as well, both be modified to reflect this.
Exactly. That's exactly, because otherwise, if you're saying to go with the more restrictive, then it's the 58 percent, then no one can build up if they're within that, that plane.
Yeah.
Then the 30 percent.
If you have a steep enough slope, you should be able to put a three-story building in there and not shade your neighbors.
Exactly, if it's far enough away.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, let's add that.
Okay.
What Steve Quilisi said.
Do you understand what we're saying there, Mr.?
Well, yeah, I mean.
You do.
When this was first brought up.
I'm aboard.
And Santa Barbara did their presentation, and they said they didn't have a height restriction, they had a formula, and that seemed to make more sense for some reason.
That sounds very analytical and, and competent and all of that.
Right. And then city councils wanted a height restriction.
Right. Well, we have it in two separate sections right now, yeah.
We have height restrictions.
We have height restrictions. Right, that's when they lowered it from 30 to 25.
Yeah, but it could still go up to 30, but if, if you go before the Planning Commission.
All right. Other than that confusion, is, are there any other objections?
That's a big one, though.
Yeah, it is a big one. I understand.
It's pretty key to the whole thing.
I have another question for staff, and I've just, I've lost this a little bit here. And I did write a bunch of questions, and I compliment staff on, on taking all of this very seriously and going back through and looking at every one of these things again before deciding to change or not change it. The solar access height limitations, this two-page thing that says template on the first page, is this a handout at the window?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because it still, it still does not have the explanation of how to find true north.
Correct.
And, and there are various ways to do it. People don't have compasses much anymore. They do have, well, a lot of people. Yes, yes, that's right.
Download the app.
Or give a survey.
This'll, this'll give me elevation and true, it gives me magnetic north.
It gives you anything you want. There's apps, so do it all.
But. I'm sure we could add a link in there.
Yeah, something, something would be useful there, because whereas the grid of streets in the city is mostly north-south and east-west, there are curves and there are other streets, and so there are going to be people that conceivably have more than one northern neighbor, and they need to figure out which is which.
Other item?
I did have one other question. On Attachment A, page nine, was, was that paragraph marked and highlighted in yellow before? It's calling attention to something. Consideration of second-story additions.
At the very end.
May be granted on the basis of an unreasonable restriction, okay.
On page 10 in red, it says, "Explain the meaning of this paragraph."
Oh, yes, okay. Yeah, there was one of these. I said I read it several times, and I still don't understand it.
Right, so there, there could be consideration if there's a hardship. If there can be demonstration that there would be some sort of hardship, then a modification to the height limit could be granted.
Like we had one project that came before us where they had that 12/12 French roof on foothill, you know, and they had to stay within the style of the house. I think that's, you know, Prince Tracy's house. That was a, a good example of that.
The red on gold, 34.
And that was a lot where the boundaries were not north-south, east-west. It's foothills kind of off like this.
And the neighbors weren't close enough to impact anyway, really, so.
That was the exception.
Right. Okay. Fine job, though, staff. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. All right. I'm not quite sure what we need to do at this point. Do we?
I suspect a motion is ordered.
Do you need a recommendation from us? Well, this is a discussion item, so I don't know that we need to have a.
You might want to see if there's any public comment on the.
Do we have any public comment?
If not, then we would recommend a motion.
Really?
To forward this to the city council, and if you, if it's your wish, to modify that portion of the code, that's 10-2.405B, and the guidance related to that to implement the 30 degree angle in lieu of the 58 percent standard.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
All right.
I'll move that we recommend a city council adoption of the guidelines as, the guidelines, the handout as presented to us in this modified version, and also recommend to city council that section two, 10-2.405B height limitation be altered to reflect the 30-degree angle type measurement from Attachment A, page four, figure five, rather than the rather complicated calculation that is there. I think there's probably still more that needs to be done because this is, this, this does not set a, a fixed standard for all of a building, and 10-2404 still does. So we'll have, we'll have an inconsistency between two parts of the code, and so I would add to that, that the city council ask staff or the city attorney to review both 10-2404 and 10-2405B and try to rationalize a single standard there for, for building height limitation.
Do we want the city council to do that? I'm sorry? We want the city council to do that?
I, I recommend, I would say that we recommend to the city council that they direct staff and the city attorney to look at 10-2404 and 10-2405B and rationalize a, a single height standard for the city, if, if that's possible.
I see what you're saying. All right. So there is a motion. Is there a second?
A second, thank you.
Thank you, right. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Jagiello?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes. Thank you. And off we go. Ms. Francina, you'll be seeing this soon, I'm sure.
I'd like to see a real-life example.
Yes, that would be very nice, wouldn't it? All right, director decisions? We have a whole page of them here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have the decisions for the month of February in your packet. Nothing significant to identify.
Thank you. And future agenda items?
And right now, again, we're, we are, we expect that we will have a number of projects filed that have gone through concept review or that we are in discussions with property owners on, but we have nothing immediately on, scheduled for your next meeting.
I have to say, this is a little scary. Yes, Kathy, no?
At our last meeting, we had, or I had brought up the commission as a whole working on water and fire issues and reviewing that, and then we haven't got the list to you, Mr. Wanniger, yet. But it was like a starting list. We could do that and try to schedule something maybe for the.
I think that would be a good discussion item.
Right. I know it's definitely a hot topic and needed.
Perhaps that's something our new planning director could work on.
It would be more, a discussion item can become a workshop in this, in this format, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so that's something to think about.
Yeah.
And there are a number of items that have been put on hold pending the hiring of the new director, so I'll be, I'll be meeting with him to brief him and stuff, and maybe those can start appearing on your agenda for discussion, and then there'll be a proper follow-up at that point.
Good, thank you.
So, just one quick question. What would be the best thing for us to give you ahead of time prior to that meeting? Is there some, a certain amount of information or a format of information, just so that we would be prepared as a group to do a workshop?
Anything that you want to provide, you know, Sherry and.
Just get it to Sherry?
And, yeah, and we can go through it and decide how it gets put together and consult with you on that.
And then we can, we can continue to work on it.
Sure.
Okay.
And I noticed that the Planning Commissioners Academy is on the agenda here for April 4th.
Correct.
Hoping we can attend that, but I'm certainly interested in it. It's a fabulous opportunity for.
So if you are interested, please send an email to Sherry.
Okay.
And we'll follow up with the city manager.
I highly recommend it to people.
Yes, it's a very good program.
All right. Committee reports. Commissioner Powers, you have anything to tell us about the planning commission, the city council meeting, sorry?
I'm going to take the Johnny Johnson amendment and recommend people go to the City of Ojai YouTube channel and watch the city council, because it was very lengthy, and there was lots of important things. And I fear that if I launch into a synopsis, you'll, you'll see how long it will be and start giving me looks like you have done in the past, because I get really detail-oriented. But it was an intriguing meeting, and, and discussion items were, you know, the, the electric vehicle charger, chargers, and that got very vibrant because there was some community money raised on a, on a GoFundMe campaign or something like that to help offset the cost of the chargers out in front of City Hall, and that was declined. So they still voted to take those out, so I thought that, that was an interesting highlight of the evening for me.
Well, there was GoFundMe money.
Yes.
Money that was raised, but the folks who had raised it wanted to use it for specific things, and those were not the specific things that the city council or others who spoke to the city council suggested that money be used for. So the GoFundMe folks said, "We're taking our money, and we'll go figure out something else to do with it that we want to do," which is, I mean, that's perfect. It's their money at this point.
That was kind of the, the highlight of the evening for me. It was interesting that Mark Whitman came up to share the, the project over on Bald and Ojai Avenue, the empty lot, that he presented to us. It was that overlay zoning he wanted to, they wanted to do to make that a mixed use over there with retail and, I think, 12 living condos as well.
Like a VMU kind of.
Like a VMU overlay. Yeah. So I hadn't never seen that kind of situation come before, the council before. Actually, Councilman Blatt said, "Why, why is this before us?" And I think it was just to give a heads up to the council that, you know, an overlay was going to be requested, and some, you know, traffic waivers and some things were going to be requested of the council and for them.
Well, no one but the council can approve a rezoning or an overlay.
Yes.
It's pretty odd to have a concept review out of the city council.
Well, I don't think they called it a concept review, did they?
No, I think it was just a discussion item, or it might have been a public hearing, but it wasn't something, I don't think, where there was a motion requested.
Mm-hmm.
But it was, it was very informative, I think.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
There was more.
That was very concise, I liked it. Commissioner Nolan, was there a Complete Streets meeting?
As a matter of fact, yes. I'm just reporting on the one from today.
Yeah.
Not too long ago. So we discussed developing guidelines for the Complete Streets master plan, and basically the guidelines would be complete streets items such as creating a, I'm just giving you some examples at this point, like a checklist for intersections. Green Street.
green street applications, parking on the street issues, signage and what have you. So, we kind of, the two things that kind of popped up the most were the green streets and also the parking, but we're going to continue to work on that, and then last month, and then of course today, we hit the streets, so to speak, and what we're doing is, we are using the capital improvement plan that has the streets highlighted for the next cycle of two thousand and nineteen, and we are going to the streets that happen to be more in, like, the pedestrian enhancement district, or say a safe routes to school area, or a thoroughfare, and we are looking at anything else that potentially could be done at the time the street improvement was being, is happening. First of all, sidewalk infill, if it's needed, and then any other applications related to complete streets, so it might be, you know, adding additional crosswalks, maybe there's just one at the intersection and we think there needs to be more, we're saying why, side amenities like trash cans or a bench even, a street tree.
Bike parking.
Bike parking, telephone pole in the middle of the sidewalk, no ADA access, that type of information. So, we've already done, there's a short portion of signal from Ojai Avenue to Matilha that we've done, all of Rincon, and then today we did also Lion Street, and then we're going to move to Bryant, and then there's an area in North Montgomery, so we've kind of identified on that map which areas we think would have potentially the most use, be it cars, pedestrians, or bicycle riders, or what have you.
Yeah, there's, there's a kind of a two-fold goal in this. The first, the first wave of stuff is things that we want to recommend to the city be done prior to the next wave of grind and pave individual blocks. Then I think we will move on to other blocks and streets that are not ready for that next phase of paving, but still need things like parking improvements, like curb extensions, like bicycle parking improvements, those kinds of things, but we want to make sure that we have given all the recommendations that we can to public works for, for the things that are going to be paved next, so that we don't get paved and then tear up and patch.
Right, and then two other things that I wanted to announce is, April twenty-first, I think I'm correct in saying that, is Earth Day, it's going to be at Libby Park, and we are going to have, I mentioned it last time I asked permission, but we are going to have a Complete Streets table there, and the other item that we're hoping to have is a bicycle, whether it's going to be the full pamphlet or a portion of a pamphlet, but basically highlighting bicycle laws or rules and also safety. And our ultimate goal with that is to basically have it available here at City Hall, at the police station, the school district, the hotels, the chamber, even local businesses, you know, like say like bike shops and what have you, so I, you know, we get a lot of complaints about, you know, people riding on the sidewalks, they're, you know, cutting across the street and not following the rules, so to speak, and so we just, this is something we feel is, that would help promote safety and hopefully obey the laws, and so, anything else, Steve? I think that was those, that was our highlights.
I think that's pretty much it, yeah.
Right.
We had some other things come up at Complete Streets that we're still not sure are in Complete Streets Committee purview, and we'll hold those till we figure that out.
Right, and by the way, we meet the first Wednesday of the month here at City Hall, sometimes we do go out on the street, but I make sure that's on the agenda, and we meet it from two-thirty to five every month.
Like today.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You have a question? I have a Complete Streets question.
All right.
So how many years away are we from having designated bike lanes and being a more bike-friendly city?
Well, presently, the city is working, well, they've received a grant, an Act of Transportation or ATP grant, that essentially covers from about Gridley on Ojai Avenue all the way to the Y, and then the Y to El Robor on Highway thirty-three, and it's a planning and implementation grant, and that's already in process, and a portion of that would have, actually, what do you call official designated bike lanes, there's a couple areas where the street's a little less narrow, or is more narrow, and you couldn't get a full bike lane, but it's a, it's a cool project, and I'm really excited about it.
Where there wasn't space for a full bike lane in some places, the recommendation is to have what are called charros, that is, a, a piece of the road, I think that is, it's painted off for bicycle use, but it's also a traffic lane, right? And it has arrows in it, and that's the sharing and the arrows part of the lane.
Or maybe there'll be a fog line, a lot of that's still to be determined, of course, both Highway one-fifty and thirty-three are under the purview of Caltrans, so everything that's going on with that grant is in collaboration with Caltrans.
Try pushing on a wet string and see how much the other end moves.
Yeah, but it's, but it is happening and it's exciting, and there's also some other grants that have been acquired that are, I guess, you know, I'm going to say they're on hold, but the ATP grant has taken precedence, and there's other grants to do other things without the city, oh, and I'm, I will have to say one more thing, sorry for taking so much time here, but if you do happen to walk or bike on the, the bike trail, please check out the intersection of Bristol and the bike trail, there's some new planters there capturing stormwater, and they're planted, and they're also making it safer for people crossing the road, because the planters actually extend out into the street, shorten the crossing distance across the street, and there's better visibility and it slows down traffic, so that, those are happening right now, and that just got planted, and actually, I was out there after the rain and water got collected and infiltrated, so that's really exciting.
The absolute end design on, on Highway thirty-three, Maricopa Highway, is not yet decided, but however it comes out, there are going to be very clearly marked and clear, clear space bike lanes there, and wherever else they can be fit into Ojai Avenue, because some pieces of it are too narrow to have parking lanes and traffic lanes and bicycle lanes, so there'll be some sharing there.
As, well, what about eliminating some of the parking on Ojai Avenue, which I think would actually be better for business?
It's still in the design process right now, so I mean, I can't answer that directly right now, but I know that at some point, I'm not sure the date, but I'm guessing in the not-too-distant future, there'll probably be a public workshop.
Yeah, I'm sure there will.
On the project, and that would be the time to come and, and ask. I mean, it's probably a possibility, but it's an option.
And at the same time.
I don't have an answer for you.
If you feel very strongly about some particular aspect, it wouldn't ever hurt to send a note to Greg Grant and say, "Please consider this as you continue your negotiations with Caltrans." So.
I have a.
For everybody out there.
I have a question and, and a comment, the question is, being a, a new residence within city limits, and I'm riding my bike around, I'm starting to experience some of what others who have been riding their bike for a long time in town have spoken about, has there been any conversation about putting stop signs at where the, where the bike, bike path crosses the street, so like when you're going across Blanch and then Ventura and then Montgomery?
There, I used to be.
My son-in-law's been asking for that for a very long time, and Greg Grant has not given him.
Because I feel like I'm kind of, even though I stop, one, I lose momentum, and I still feel like I'm taking my life in my hands when I do those.
Originally, were stop signs all along.
So presently, there are stop signs for the people using the trail.
Right.
But I, I know what you're saying, and I.
It goes backwards.
And I asked.
You're saying stop signs for the.
The traffic.
Should be for the traffic.
The car should stop.
Yes, especially for like the core of downtown, maybe I can understand, like on Montgomery or another busier street, maybe it's the opposite, but I, I tend to agree with you, and I did bring it up, but I, I know that hasn't happened, so.
Bring a pedestrian with you.
And that has been brought.
Yeah.
They step into the street, the cars have to stop.
And that has been brought up to Greg Grant, but, yeah.
Yeah, they seem, it seems backwards that it's.
Absolutely.
Stop signs.
And remember, you can all come to Complete Streets with any comments or.
I was just curious if that conversation had, had occurred.
Oh, that's right, we have the core, that's right.
We have had that conversation.
Thank you, we only can have three of us, but.
The, the comments I have to make is, one about Earth Day on April twenty-first is in Libby Park this year, so it's a larger event, and it's hosted by the Green Coalition. Councilwoman Francina is actually going to also be doing a speaking at the gazebo stage on how to create Ojai a more bike-friendly city, and there'll be lots of other speakers on various topics as, as well, and performers on, on the gazebo stage, and so that's from eleven to four on April twenty-first at Libby Park, and then this Saturday, which is the tenth, I believe, is the Ojai Valley Restoration and Resilience Council, it's the third or fourth meeting, I believe, it's at the Ojai Library, I call it the Annex, I know there's another name for, Suzie, what's the name for that, that little room that we're meeting, we meet in?
The library meeting room.
Yeah, okay, there's a library meeting room, so it's this Saturday from three to five, and it's the Ojai Valley Restoration and Resilience Council, so it's a group of concerned citizens who've come together, up to fifty people at times with breakout groups, that are speaking about advocacy, structures, building codes, kind of how to up-level a strategic plan as we move forward into the future, and the group got started post the Thomas Fire as a response to where do we go from here, Ojai, the next fifty years kind of thing, so that's the Ojai Valley Restoration and Resilience Council, and everyone's invited to come to that.
Thank you. Other comments, anybody? Councilmember Francina. I still remember your comment from years ago, when people were complaining about kids riding their bikes on the sidewalk in the arcade, and you said, "The reason they're doing that is because it's not safe to ride in the streets."
Right.
I've always kept that in mind.
Yeah, they have a choice between breaking the law or getting killed.
Yeah.
So, you know, I see that all the time, I also figured out why so many cyclists are on the wrong side of the street, because you only have your crossings on one side on Ojai Avenue, I'm constantly zigzagging, you know, when you start using your bicycle as a vehicle, as your primary mode of transportation, you really realize that we have a long ways to go, and your question is well-taken, because now a whole generation of kids have grown up, and now they're drivers, but they never had the empathy, you know, they don't have empathy for cyclists, because they were never a trained cyclist, so they're terrible, I mean, you know, the drivers are, are just, you're a different driver once you've ridden a bicycle for many years, you just have a totally different attitude and awareness, you don't yell at kids and tell them it's dangerous for them to be on the street, you know, that's, I've, I've had that happen when I led the bike train, but I don't, on Earth Day, Kelly, Kelly Posco and I are going to do a ten-minute talk on all the easy things we can do right now that don't cost any money, or very little money, to make Ojai truly bicycle-friendly, if we really had the will and the drive, this wouldn't be taking decades, because I have letters from school-aged children from a hundred kids at Topa Topa back in nineteen ninety-seven asking for bike lanes, you know, from my perspective, it's a health and safety issue, and we should be ashamed that we now have, we're in a, caught in a terrible vicious cycle, because everybody's driving their kid to school at an age when they should be, you know, enjoying the independence of being on a bike, I was taking Fairview Road, I was in a van with my dogs, taking them to the river bottom, and there were two little kids, I haven't seen this in decades, trying to go up Fairview Road from Foothill, two little kids this high with their helmets, you know, I got, I slowed down, I waved to them, they ride away, pulled over, so they wouldn't, you know, get run over, but it was so sweet, because that reminds you, there was a time when kids could independently go exploring, you know, and we want to, we want, we want free-range kids in Ojai. So I just wanted to mention for, at the, at the Ojai Valley Restoration and Resilience Council this Wednesday, I mean, this Saturday at three o'clock, Reggie Woods sent an email, your former planning commissioner was Reggie, Reggie Woods, he said that he's going to be available to share what he knows and has experience concerning high fire hazard zone construction, he's going to share his knowledge of fire-resistant techniques and materials that are fully approved and available, so that should be interesting, and we have all kinds of people that come, the permaculture community, people with various areas of expertise, people from the Tree Committee, the Raptor Center, the Land Conservancy, you know, so it's usually a very interesting group, and I always find, I always learn something new, so if you're free at three o'clock, I'm going to go to that, and then I'm going to go to the museum for the fire, what's it called? The scorched, scorched earth, and all be good, okay, thank you, thank you for your service, thank you.
Suzie, thank you. There being no further business, we are concluding our meeting.